How's it going Heather?
Good, how are you guys?
Pretty good.
I can't see y'all.
You can't see, oh. Oh no. You can hear us okay though now?
I can hear you, I can't see anybody.
Alright, good thing. No, any video?
Huh? This video?
Yeah.
Oh, that video.
Heather said she can't see the select.
He has it just on a title card right now. He'll turn it to the cameras when the meeting starts.
Alright, thanks.
Thank you.
See what's gonna happen is I'm gonna go like this and you're not gonna be attached.
It's gonna drop. It's okay if they break, they were like five bucks at Dollar General.
I know, and I've got like a half a dozen pairs.
Do I have them everywhere? They're in my car, they're in every room in the house.
But usually I'm pretty good about it.
Yeah. I like to go so when I break them it doesn't bother me. Or lose them, or drop them in the garden and Jeff wrote and tells them, that happened the other day.
At six o'clock.
Sure.
At six o'clock, I'd like to call the meeting to order. Can we all rise for the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everyone to our July 7th Select Board meeting. Oh, the video's on, there it goes. It's all good. The first item on our agenda, excuse me, is to approve our minutes from our June 15th special Select Board meeting.
I make a motion to approve the minutes from the June 15th special Select Board meeting.
I'll second it.
Lee is the motion and Jeff is the second. Any changes, corrections, omissions, errors, anybody see anything on these?
I have none.
I didn't see any.
Jeff, you okay with it?
Yeah, I didn't see any.
Heather?
Looking good to me.
Alright. All those in favor of approving the minutes as written, please say aye.
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 Next item is citizens' comments. If there's someone here that would like to address the board regarding an issue that is not on the agenda, now would be the time to do so. Citizens' comments. Julie, we did get the letter from Leslie, but I was thinking that's police related.
I was gonna bring it up under the police discussion, yeah.
Alright, because it isn't gonna be on the agenda even though she's not gonna be here. Alright. Alright, not hearing any citizens' comments, we'll go on to old business. Julie, can you take us through our list?
So at long last, the pool has been repaired. It's been quite a journey, but the pool will be open tomorrow for the summer.
Julie?
Yes?
Sorry to butt in, have we found anything out about the perpetrators of the damage?
We have not. I will say that our security cameras have caught other offenders of various sorts, so it is paying for itself, but no, we have not found who did the damage to the pool. The expense was enough that we will be submitting it to insurance. I'm getting, I should get the final bill probably tomorrow, but it is in the $3,000 range, so we will be submitting it to insurance.
What were the other issues at the pinnacle? That the cameras have been picking?
We identified a couple of people that were dumping kitty litter in the garbage cans there. Another gentleman dumping household garbage in that pavilion. That pavilion is very happening when there's nobody around, I can tell you. It's a happening spot in town. And then of course, the Route 11 project parking their trucks at the pinnacle parking area and dumping a load of pavement all over the pinnacle lawn. We've identified who that was and had that rectified, so it's actually proven to be quite helpful. So anyways, pool is opening tomorrow. We will be, Jeff and Arnie, we did have some plumbing issues. We will be looking to hire somebody likely in the fall when the pool is closed to replace a bunch of the plumbing in the pit. The plumbing around the pool deck was replaced when we did the liner a number of years ago, but the plumbing that's in the pit is old, has been, you know, kinda just rigged around for a number of years, so we need to fix that. So that'll be a fall project that we'll be looking to do.
You know, I'd like to thank you Jeff for the last three, four days over the weekend. I've seen you there every single day getting that thing ready and getting the water going and working on stuff and doing things. You know, it's appreciated.
Yep, very much so. Signage, the town signage that we've been talking about for two years now. While I really wanted to have a few of the signs constructed and installed this year, there is a grant program that is gonna be opening up. There's only a select few communities that are eligible to apply for it. We are one of them, and it would pay for the construction and installation of our wayfinding signage package, which is a significant amount of money. So in speaking with SE Group who helped us design that and get the approval, you know, the permit approval, we've decided probably the smartest thing to do is to hold off and go with one manufacturer or one fabricator next year when we can get it funded. And, you know, because a couple of, just two signs is $8,000. They're expensive, so we'll wait, do them all together next year.
Is that another example of having projects ready when the grants are available and?
Absolutely, so this grant source is, $5 million was allocated in the legislature this year. It is to municipalities who are either village center or downtown designated and have received a Better Connections Grant. The Better Connections Grant is what funded our master plan. And so the wayfinding package is a direct initiative from the master plan. We've done the wayfinding, we did the master plan, we've done the wayfinding plan, now the installation of the signs. So we would be eligible and probably funded. And that's potentially a $100,000 package with minimal match.
That's what I was just about to ask.
Yeah, with minimal match. The match they're talking about at this point is 10%.
10%, and what are we looking to?
So if we, I mean, my plan, I think when we go to write the grant and look at it, we need to be careful. Obviously, I don't believe we would be looking to install every sign that wayfinding plan calls for. That's a lot of signage and I don't know that we want all that signage. So we would need to be strategic about what ones we're picking, but I think you're looking at, you're probably easily 100 to 150,000. And then if you added in the town gateway signs, which would be great, then you're probably up around 200. So if we could get, you know, $200,000 worth of signage installed for, you know, 20 grand, you know, way to go, so. But we're gonna hold off for now.
I remember a number kicking around that we were gonna put in our budget just for 20 or 30,000 to do what we can as far as just starting the process. But for a grant like that, that'd be fantastic.
It would be fantastic, so we're just gonna hold off, just, I mean, we've waited two years, you know, what's, a couple, a few more months. So we're just gonna hold off and wait for that to fund. It'll open up this fall. Brookside, the trail on Brookside is done.
Almost.
Well, the trail itself is done. The trail is done. The bridge we are working on right now, permitting has been approved for the bridge, looking to construct probably in August is the plan. And we are eradicating the barberry in a slightly different way. The grant approved and paid for us using a herbicide to spray that barberry. But Frank Kelly and Amy, and I don't know her last name, from
Slippery Slope.
Slippery Slope Goat Farm, they're going to, they're coming in the week of July 19th. They will be up there for six days. They're fenced in with their electric fencing and they're moved, I think it's every day, right, to a new location, every day, every other day, to a new location to chew down the barberry. So it'll be, you know, it'll be a fun project, definitely better than using the herbicide or the pesticide up there. It will end up having to be probably a couple of years of doing this before the barberry is, you know, because the barberry will grow back. But we're getting them up there before it flowers, Frank said is the ideal thing, to get it before it flowers, so we can hopefully kill most of it, so. It's a fun project, it's a great little story for a small town.
We're looking for some volunteers to do the walking of the goats, to bring them in and get them water and a few other things as we go along and stuff.
What about cleanup?
It'll be natural cleanup.
They fertilize it?
We will be, the town will be helping, we're going to get the, she has a 275 gallon water trough that we're gonna get across with the, with the town's four wheeler. And then Jeff is gonna use the jetty trailer. We'll fill that from the hydrant and we'll pump it from the jetty trailer to that tank on the other side of the brook. So that'll be their water supply for.
The trail is walkable at this time.
Yes.
Just getting across the brook, and even that's cleared out a little bit so you can get across there and stuff. It's not blazed and marked, but it's very obvious where it goes. And it's a nice walk across the brook, you make the big loop around and there's some beautiful views of the village from up there.
Yeah.
I don't know if this ties into item number 10 on the agenda, but does that include that second parcel that's further up the hill, that 30 acre parcel or whatever?
Yes, yeah.
It's a nice trail.
It actually runs up along the borderline of a few of the properties that the town borders on. And the views start up at the top there and then there's a farm on the backside and then there's some other neighbors up on the other side there. It's a really cool trail.
Nice.
I mean, it's easy to get to, it's gonna be accessible for the first part of the trail once the bridge is in and possibly a boardwalk through the main trail there, so it would be accessible for handicapped folks to use the beginning part of the trail. And where it spreads out, of course, you're not gonna be able to, you know, zip up the hill like that, but it'll get them across the creek and into the woods and into some nice spots around there, which is really sweet too.
Nice.
I just wanna say how exciting it is that this has happened. And it's been a while, but it's really exciting and I loved hearing about the goats.
It'll be fun, yes. If this works well, we've got some other places that we may.
It's definitely a better alternative than spraying it with chemicals. I mean, I'd rather go up there and pull the stuff out of hands by hand than start spraying them. And that was one of the options that they had, and it was like nah, not really.
Well, the grant budget had included $2,000 for the pesticide. And the goats are, we're just gonna spend the 2,000 on six or seven days of goats, so. I think it's great, I think it's fun.
Go goats, go.
I think there's like 18 of them or something.
Yeah, there's 18 goats.
It's a little herd, and there's two rowdy ones and the rest kinda follow them, so we have to watch them.
Also wanted to just let you know that we have hired our fourth employee for the water wastewater division. Wayne Wickens is here, started on Tuesday.
What's his name, Wayne?
Wayne Wickens. Already proving, Jeff may wanna speak more to this, already proving to be a valuable asset. Wayne is wastewater certified. Will be getting his water certification, which if you have wastewater, water is not difficult to get. Wayne is also a licensed electrician and was actually one of the electricians that worked on the installation of the sewer plant upgrade back in 2002. So he's already doing some other things and saving the town money, so he's a great asset. Very happy to have found him.
That's fantastic.
Yes.
Most definitely, and he actually looked at the electrical panel at the pool. I don't know if you heard the noise it was making.
That's a scary place.
Well, he's gonna fix it.
But we've decided we gotta change the GFI in one of the relays. And he's obviously got connections with a place in Rutland. We're gonna get an account there, so, and I told him anytime we need something, you know what we need, so he can get it. And once we get the patch, we'll fix that up there. And there's a few things that Julie wants him to do here in the town hall.
The new lights for the hallway coming up the stairs. They've been sitting in boxes for like three months, so, yeah.
Sounds like a great asset to the town.
Yeah, he's already assessed the treatment plant. Was it five or six years ago we had a bunch of LED lights put in? But there's still some other fixtures that need to be changed out and he's already assessed them and he's getting together some figures so we can get all the lights changed over down there, which will save us money on electricity also, so.
Nice.
It's definitely a great asset, and the other two guys get along with them great and I think he's a great fit. So I am really happy with the choice we made, so.
Might be your successor eventually Jeff, if things work out.
That's what the intention was.
Maybe he'll get out of here sooner than I planned.
We were looking for that, that was one of the qualifications we were looking for with supervisory. This was part of a succession planning for Jeff, so.
Yeah, and the attitude is the big thing and he's, he wants to, he's really happy with what he found when he came in here. You know, he's happy with the condition of the facilities. I took him around to the water facilities and today he said I was really surprised how well maintained there and it just, it feels good to come into a job where, you know, the place is taken care of and there's no problems when things need to be fixed. We fix them, we don't wait, you know. And I honestly believe that if you do good maintenance, it saves you money in the long run.
Oh, for sure. Totally agree. Well, that's good news.
Yes, the 2020 audit has been completed. I didn't give you guys all a hard copy, but if anybody is interested in looking at it, I'd be happy to email it to you, it's a big document. There are no significant findings, our audit results came out good and as we expected. And then just an update on zoning, I'll be giving you an update hopefully, you know, once a month. The Planning Commission has nominated, as most of you know, has nominated a subcommittee to work with Jason and of course Preston, being a professional planner, will be a part of that process as well to kinda review some of the proposed things and, you know, make some tweaks here and there. So they are working on that process and have a plan in place or are working towards a plan of bringing those bylaws to you at some point in the near future. And that is it for me.
Anybody else have any?
I'll just add to the Plan Commission thing that they've asked me to go and speak to answer any questions that might, you know, pertain to the planning changes or whatever, what I feel this community needs for water and wastewater, so I'm glad they did that because it's good to get that stuff out there upfront before any decisions are made, so they know.
You mean as far as the capacities of the water system?
Right, capacities and what I feel we can do for businesses and, you know, I'm all about small businesses coming in here. In the place we're in now, I don't know if we can handle another large business like Drew's. They've been a very big asset to us, but right now our utilities aren't capable of handling another business that size. But there's several commercial lots in town that would be fit well for smaller businesses, so.
You know, a lot of it depends on the load that it's gonna put on our systems and whether they can handle it.
And obviously the upgrades, like we've been working on trying to get the second well in and things like that, you know. It's, right now we're limited to so much. And if we get those upgrades put in, then we'll have that much more breathing room, so.
That's it, that's all I have for old business.
Heather, anything? Lee?
I have nothing.
Not at this time, thanks.
Next item on our agenda is the Community Greenhouse, the letter of intent. You all should have gotten in your package, a draft or a copy from the town attorney with the letter of intent with our Chester, Chester Community Greenhouse and Garden Greenhouse Project folks are here to help us along through this and to help us in the discussion on this. And it's Cheryl Joy, Caitlin, Tim Roper and Robert Neath. And a lot of it's, the legalese, and I get, a lot of it was put in here to help protect the town as we go forward in this. But the main objective was to give a document to the greenhouse group to help them go forward in their grant searches and their applications for grants and stuff. Does anybody on the Select Board have any concerns or any questions or any comments or statements they would like to bring up regarding this document at this time?
I think it covers what needs to be covered and it'll be a good starting point.
Alright. Heather, anything?
It seemed good to me, like you said, Arnie, a lot of legalese kind of thing. And I thought it was a lot longer than it was gonna be, but live and learn, right?
Well, the last document that we discussed regarding leases on the town property was about a page and a half with the Chester Historical Society. And that thing was just the opposite of something like this, I guess.
Right, right.
I, I mean, I've gone through it and the group did have a meeting yesterday and there were some concerns and some questions and some clarifications that we wanted to go over and talk about and stuff. The one, a few of the things that I saw in here, when we get to number one, the project on the second page, it had a list of seven potential sites. And I was thinking that maybe that's not really a concern for us, the seven sites, because we're basically, we're just dealing with the two town sites. And also the fact that most of the, I think all the other sites were basically ruled out for one certain reasons and stuff, so we're not looking at the seven sites. We're basically just concerned with the two sites, I think. I think maybe that'd be something that could be more clarified.
You certainly can, it's just stating that you reviewed seven sites and that you've narrowed it down to two. So whether or not you want that statement in there is entirely up to you.
I thought the language in that paragraph was pretty clear that the seven sites were identified, including two owned by the town. And like you said, Arnie, that's all we're concerned about is those two. And that's what this letter of intent covers.
Yeah, but what happens on the next paragraph, it says that the Chester Select Board going forward to undertake the due diligence necessary to consider the above referenced project sites. So I just didn't wanna make it seem like we were considering the other ones also, just so it's clear that we're considering just the two town sites for this letter of intent.
So we could just, let's have seven potential sites for the current reasons we've been identifying to date. Okay, we can clarify that, I mean, it's, I think we can clarify it to just to say that it's been narrowed down to two sites.
I would suggest that in that number two, it says, consider the above referenced, just insert town owned project sites. I think that would clarify that sufficiently.
Add it in on that part there?
Yeah, so right after above referenced, just put in town owned project sites.
I don't think it hurts to represent that there was seven sites considered and, you know, so people don't think they were just trying to keep it to town sites, but it doesn't matter to me if it's a narrow knob.
I can make it just clear that we've narrowed it down to the two, yeah.
Yeah, sure Cheryl. Help us out with this.
Perhaps a clarification that the other five sites were disqualified for various reasons?
Yep, that's fine, yeah, that's easy.
Cheryl, you might as well stay there, huh?
Might as well.
Or you can help out on whatever else might come up. Yeah, one other thing on E where it said providing a public forum. I think the, it was one of the anticipated conditions, but that's the town's job to do that public forum, correct? So they, I think the Chester, I mean, the greenhouse group would participate in a public forum with them, but we're providing it.
Right.
Well, I'm not questioning you directly, but I'm just wondering if that's something that the Greenhouse Committee would wanna do as well?
Well, they're definitely gonna be involved with it for sure. I mean, that's, you know, the process, but it's gonna be to satisfy our due diligence as far as forming public and letting everyone know about it, having a public forum. That's our responsibility, but with the help of the Chester, you know, the greenhouse group to participate in it for the informational part of it and stuff. It's not a requirement that's for them, it's more of our.
Right, okay.
And I view this list as a list of things that need to happen, not necessarily who is doing them.
Right. Okay, sure.
That's how I'm viewing this.
So the Chester group is here, the Greenhouse and Gardens Committee and stuff, and I welcome any comments or concerns that you guys have or anything else or your thoughts on this letter?
Well, first, I think it's wonderful and we all thank you for the letter of intent and for your desire to give us one. And it looks really terrific. I guess one thing that I wanted to point out is that actually in 4B, that is, essentially that is our five year strategic plan.
Thank you Susan. All of a sudden the noise disappeared.
And I guess one other thing I wanted to point out is that in 2A, it says ongoing maintenance, so substantiation to the Select Board satisfaction that we've raised and can sustain sufficient capital funding to complete renovation, et cetera, but, and ongoing maintenance. That is going to be ongoing, we're gonna be raising that money as we go along. So we won't have everything that we need for every year when we build it, but we are, that's part of our strategic plan and we will be raising that money for ongoing maintenance as time goes on. We won't have that initially, we'll have enough to build it and contingency plans, of course, in case it needs to be decommissioned, which we don't anticipate happening. But that's the one thing, is the ongoing maintenance.
Cheryl Joy, before the issue that you just brought up, you were speaking about when the static and the interference happened. It was number four that you were speaking to?
Yeah, it was 4B, just a comment that the 4B is actually our five year strategic plan at which we're going to be updating yearly, if not soon, if it needs to be updated earlier than that, we will. But annual updates are anticipated. And that has, you know, that plays on to the ongoing maintenance funding that we'll need to generate regularly, constantly.
Yeah.
So regarding that, not necessarily the ongoing maintenance, but the decommissioning if it's necessary, do you have any idea what that might be? If the greenhouse does need to be decommissioned and would that be reserved in escrow or how would you handle that?
The greenhouse itself is very valuable even as it is, just laying in pieces. And there, you know, so that in itself would pay for anybody who would want that. And we actually know a few people that wouldn't mind having it, so, you know, people can deal with that.
In the event of a disaster and it needs to be taken down and nobody wants to buy it? I mean, just curious what the actual cost would be regardless of what the funding source is?
The cost of taking it, the cost of taking it down over in Walpole, I think was about $20,000.
Okay.
And it's worth far more than that, so even parts of it that, in case of a disaster, I imagine probably at $20,000 worth of the pieces probably would still exist. But we'll have, of course, insurance also and, you know, those kind of things are covered in insurance and, you know, great natural disaster, well.
Well, and that's exactly what I was thinking, let's say we have a hurricane or a flood comes through and just wipes it out and there is no structure.
Right.
You know, what's it gonna cost to demo the site and return it back to?
I would imagine whatever insurance we come up, you know, have in the end would cover that.
Okay, thank you. I don't mean to nitpick, but I'm just curious. Thank you.
Anything else Cheryl?
I think that's about it. I think it's a great document. And of course, everything can be worked out without, as it's. And of course, everything can be worked out without, as it says, you know.
I mean, there's a lot in here. There's a lot of it that you're already working on, that you're preparing, that you're going to have answers to. There's some of it that's, maybe it's going to come a little later than sooner. Our objective is to make sure the town's protected no matter what happens and then make sure that you have a document that's going to serve as your needs also as you go forward for, you know, trying to solicit grants and donations, capital funds or whatever else comes along too. I would think that the next step that's going to happen once we clear up with this is going to be the public forum to make sure that the citizens are involved in any decisions that are going to be made with this and we get the input of everybody that's in town that has, might have some interest in this in whatever way they choose. But after that, then we would be heading towards a choice of the two sites, is to give you something a little more concrete to go by.
And then you were, at that point is when you would be looking to draft a lease. And once that lease is drafted, the town is then obligated to hold what's called a 1061 hearing, which is just notification to the property owners of Chester. Typically, that is for a land sale or granting of an easement. But I think to err on the side of caution because it's a, really considered a permanent structure on town property. It's kind of the same thing, so we would err on the side of caution and follow that, that protocol. It's a 30-day notice. The select board has a hearing, it's a 30-day notice. And then at the end of that 30 days, the select board can sign the lease. So I think the next step is your public forum. You guys can sign your letter of intent. I'll make these changes. You can sign it at your next meeting if you want. And then as you guys are working through your process and we start getting closer to where we can start drafting a lease on an actual official document. So would there be then another, another formal forum or? Yeah, there would be, the select board would hold a hearing. And at that point, you would have narrowed down which site. You would have drafted a formal lease so that that's available to anybody who's in, you know, any of the property owners who are interested in really site-specific stuff at that point. So that really is your next step.
It's, I would think that that's the more formal part of it, the more detailed part of it when we finally get to the documents, especially the lease document.
Yeah. At that point, details have been ironed out. Yeah.
And I agree with Julie, even though it's not a sale of the property or an easement, it's a pretty serious contract.
Well, it's almost like an easement. It is, very similar, I think. Exactly.
You know, because you're relinquishing use of that property for a long, a good amount of time. And I would, you know, even that's going to be a question that we're going to have to determine, how long a lease? 25 years, 50 years, 100 years?
What do you do?
And wherever that goes. Does it get reviewed every so often, every five years or, and what are all the stipulations on that and stuff?
Yep.
But I think it's a good starting point. Well, you've guys been working on it for a long time, so it's not a starting point for you guys, but you've been really.
Well, it's about a little more than a year now.
Has it been that long?
Yep.
It's amazing what you guys have accomplished in the year. From just an idea that you had to having the building to this point where you are now with all the information that you provided, with the five-year plan, with the enthusiasm that I see in the town from people and everything else related to this, that you've done, I think, a fantastic job.
We're doing a search for a treasurer now. We're going to really need that coming soon.
So if there's anyone out there with the skills.
If you know any treasurers, you know, send them our way.
Hopefully, Sean will make a note of that for his story.
Hint, hint.
Nice hint. I mean, we can go forward with this with just a little minor or change or two and have it, a motion done at this meeting. Because it's my signature.
The motion is going to be for Arnie to sign, so if you're comfortable that I will just clarify the language, that's up to you.
And we'll run it by everybody before we sign it again. And I'll make sure all the board members get it with those few little minor changes that we might have in the committee, just to keep things going.
That's fine. I can draft this tomorrow, send it around to all of you. Yeah, that's fine. Thank you.
Any other concerns or comments or questions from any board members or anybody? Well, there's not that many people out there today, but.
Just thank you again for your support. It's been amazing. We think this is going to be wonderful for the community and we could do it without your help.
I just, I think it's a fantastic.
We're looking for a 200-year lease.
I give lifetime guarantees all the time on my work now.
Oh, right.
My lifetime. So you got to.
Well, it's almost 100 years old as it is, you know, so.
It's got so many positive things for it, you know? When we talk about economic development for the town, we talk about community, we talk about getting people together, we talk about sustainable food and local foods and it covers everything. And then the education part of it too.
I think it'll be like a destination. It's really going to be amazing. It's an historic greenhouse. I mean, I think it'll draw people to come and see it, you know?
I mean, yeah, the people in the town, but also people to see what kind of example we're setting and what's going on in our village. I think it's great. Thanks for everything you guys have done.
Thank you.
I want to add, because you mentioned that when we talked to the USDA about grants and we're working with them, the comment they made, the area director for the USDA was that they thought this could be a model for all of Vermont, for other communities as well. So that was really great to hear.
That's exciting. Fantastic.
Yep.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to move on. Oh, we need a motion.
Yes.
Yeah, lucky I slowed up on that one before I go down my checklist. So we would need a motion to approve the letter of intent with a minor change or two and authorizing the select board chair to sign it.
So moved.
Heather's the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Jeff's the second. Any further discussion on this? Before any signatures go on it, we'll make sure everybody has a copy of it and can take a look at it to see what's going on with it, just to make sure and then we'll take it from there.
No, that would be my comment.
All those in favor of the motion as stated, please say aye.
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 Anybody opposed? Don't think so. All set. Thanks again. And the next item is our police department review, the process and the timeline. You want to take us through this, Julie?
Thank you. So at the last meeting, you had asked for my timeline that I've been working on. This has been developing in my mind for several months now, so you can be assured that it will probably morph and change even more. These are really just the things that I've been thinking about, the goals that I have for a review and some improvements to the police department. Some of them have already been completed, again, because this has been something I've been creating for myself anyways, but.
Julie, sorry to interrupt.
No.
Can you just give me the goal of this particular effort?
So when I took over as town manager, when I was appointed as town manager, one of the things that I wanted to do was start department by department, going through, having worked for the town for a number of years and with the department heads that we have for a number of years, we know that there are things that we can be doing to do better. And so we started first with the ambulance service, because we knew that was the most immediate need. So we had an assessment done of the ambulance service. Some changes were made. And, you know, there's a lot of improvement taking place in that department. That ambulance service in Chester is going to be very different a year from now than it is today. We're already seeing a lot of strategic planned improvement. So the next step is the police department. And really, the police department came up next, number one, because I have a chief who's going to be retiring in the next year and a half to two years. So this is a little bit also of succession planning, similar to what we did with Jeff. I have department heads that are all pushing 30 years, that in the next probably five to seven years are not going to be the same people running the departments. So I am trying to get through this before I lose a lot of them, because I want their input into areas that they know there are things that need to be changed. So the police department was next, also just because of what's going on in the world now. It's a good time to just take a look at what we're doing. And it's not to find fault. It's what are we doing? Is what we're doing well? Are we doing it well? Or is it, are there things that we, there's always things we can do better and any, all of us. So what are those things? You know, there's things coming. We know things like body cams are coming. We know things like potentially police oversight committees are coming. We know that policies and procedures now have to be reviewed annually. So do we have staffing for that? What does that look like? What is it we hear about, I mentioned this the last time, we hear the phrase "community policing" all the time. What is it? What does it look like? What does it mean for Chester? Is it a resource officer? We've talked about that in my 16 years here. That's been brought up a number of times. Is that something we should be looking at? So it's really taking a deep dive into that. And, you know, a department like a police department, a lot like an ambulance service and a lot like fire, it's not something that, sitting in my desk, you necessarily even know what you're talking about. So it requires somebody with expertise coming in and taking a look. Police officers, we do not have as many to choose from. So how can we make our department, if I have an officer fresh out of the academy or somebody who's just looking to change services, you know, how do we get them to come here versus going to Springfield? You know, retention tools, a lot of towns right now are looking at retention tools for police officers. Academy numbers are low. Not a lot of people are going into this field. And you've got a lot of people looking to retire and get out of it. So there's going to be a crunch for officers coming. And how do we make ourselves more attractive? And like the conversation or the, my, one of the agenda items, going from a 30-year to a 20-year retirement plan, that's a workers' comp safety matter that is being reviewed statewide at this point, you know, because of the psychological wear and tear for police officers. And so it's just appropriate that this is where we start. But I am planning to do this over the years with each department, to just really do an assessment of what can we be doing and doing it better. And, you know, my department has, are doing that. But for police and ambulance, like I said, it requires somebody from outside coming in, because I don't have the expertise to do that.
Thank you.
Okay.
It seems like it's always, I think, a good idea to do a little self-reflection when it comes to town services, no matter what they are, whether it's the highway department or the ambulance department or the police department. And I think it'll be a valuable tool. I mean, we did have the gentleman, he gave us a brief assessment. Whipple was his name or?
Yes, he reviewed our policies and procedures. And so those changes are, that's, you know, the first thing on here. And that's been completed. Rick is now working with Amy on getting those changes in and updated and that's, we now have a plan in place of how those, you know, there are 12 of our policies that are supposed to be reviewed and updated annually. So Rick now has, there is a plan in place of, you know, each month, there's a new policy that's reviewed. So there's a plan in place for that now. The next, I need my glasses on. The citizens complaint, you know, Leslie Thorson had brought that to our attention way early on. So that's been, you know, that process has been reviewed and fine-tuned and there's a process now for people in Chester. If there is a complaint that does not rise to a criminal level, there's a different process for that, obviously. But if it's a complaint against an officer, there's a complaint form online can be filled out, submitted. It does go to the police chief, but it comes to me as well. So people don't need to feel that if there is a complaint against a police officer for some reason, that it's just going to get, you know, tucked in a desk and never reviewed. It does come to me as well. So there's a checks and balances there to make sure that we're operating as we should.
Julie, can I ask a question? If someone wanted to submit this form, could they submit it to you and then it goes to the chief?
Yep, they could, absolutely.
So they could submit it to you or the chief?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Because it's going to get shared either way. Yep.
Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
So where, I'm just looking on our town website, where is that form?
It should be under police department.
Not seeing that either.
I think Amy put it under, like, forms and documents.
Yeah, I was looking at the dropdown menus. Okay, I'll find it. I just was curious.
Yep. It should be under the police department page. So the next step, reviewing and monitoring internal operations, I mean, you know, this is, this is something that is ongoing and, you know, working with Rick, you know, the purchase of the fourth vehicle that you just approved, you know, that's a, that's a step that helps tremendously. You know, finding more training opportunities for our officers, you know, to improve themselves, you know? I mean, the things that police officers are required to know across the board is ridiculous. So to have ongoing training is really essential for them to be successful and to do their job well. And, you know, we don't always do that well. We don't always find those opportunities. Adam is going to be attending a week-long program up in Essex that's come to the area that I learned about on leadership for police officers. So he's kind of excited about that step and, but we're always going to be looking for opportunities for them to educate themselves. And, you know, we're going to really work hard on, there's a lot of changes coming to the police academy. There's a new director of the police academy. Our last VLCT board meeting, she was there and talked about a lot of the things that she is looking to do and the changes that she's looking to make. A lot of the officers, I know I have spoken with Rick, he was very pleased with some of the things that she is talking about changing. Officers coming out of the academy feeling a little more equipped to be a police officer in 2021 with the skill set that they're required to have, they often don't, don't have the training that they need. So that's, the training is going to be a big piece. And that's ongoing. That's an ongoing thing. You know, and then I talked about number four being the retention tools. Again, ongoing, but, you know, upgrading our retirement program, that's on this agenda. You know, we have a great health insurance package. There is a sick time conversion program that I've mentioned to you guys before. I'm hopefully going to be presenting that this fall with the revisions to personnel And then early 2022, because it will need inclusion in the budget, would be hiring a firm to come in and do a assessment of the police department. And my vision for this is that it's not just somebody coming in from the outside, looking at us and saying, here's all the things you're doing wrong. That's not what this is about. This is about identifying the things we do well and the things that we can improve, where are there efficiencies. I want our officers, current, our current officers to be very involved in this process. It's an opportunity for them to have input into things that they would like to see changed and improved. Many of them have talked to me independently about things that they would like to see. So this is a good opportunity to help them and to learn about their needs. It is not just pointing the finger and here's, here's where you need to change. This is about improvements for the officers and for the town and for the community. And we did have an assessment done in 2013. You know, Leslie's letter addresses that. First of all, 2013 is 18, or eight years ago. Policing has changed in eight years pretty significantly. And that assessment was done for a very specific purpose. It was done specifically for the purpose of, did we need a fifth police officer at that time? It wasn't an assessment like what I'm looking to have done. There are certainly things that we could take from it, but the assessment that I would be looking for is something a little more robust. It's not to achieve one specific goal. It's, it's to look at the whole department. And then, of course, the step six would be implementing those recommendations and then, you know, the developing a community policing plan. Rick and I have a lot of ideas about this. Look, Scott. Look, Scott got a lot of really great ideas of what this could look like for Chester. At the moment, we don't necessarily, the way things operate now, we don't have the staffing for it. So that's where those efficiencies, you know, where are there efficiencies? Are there more officers needed? What does that look like? We don't know. So this is where, you know, that assessment will help us. And then we all looking to do, Sean came into my office not long after the last meeting, and it was very interesting, the next day Rick walked in with the exact same idea of holding a citizens' police academy in Chester. There are towns across the country that, that do this. Sean brought it to my attention. I did some research on it. It's very cool. But it's a great tool to inform those that are really interested in what our, what a police department does. It kind of lets them be in the life of a police officer for a period of time. We would make it regional. We're too small for it to just be us. But Springfield has thought about doing it. Bell's Falls has thought about doing it. So kind of merging efforts, we mentioned it to some state people. They were kind of, they're like, oh, you know, this would be a really great idea. So something that we could, a tool at the end, you know? But, so that's my plan. Again, it will morph over time, for sure. But, and it's a lot. It's not going to be accomplished in a couple of months. It's a, it's a process.
There's, there is a lot on here.
Yeah.
Taken on quite a bit.
Yeah.
And I think we're heading in the right direction. It's always good for a self-evaluation to see how things are working and how, where we're heading and where do we want to go? To get input from citizens and from the police department and from everybody involved. All the stakeholders, get everybody in the same room together to talk about things, to see what the issues are, to see what the problems are, and see what the positive things are, too.
Exactly.
I mean, you know, we're a small town and with a small police department. And some of our issues are in common, I think, with a lot of bigger departments. And then we have our own special, smaller things that might come up and that might be applicable here and stuff and how they work. One thing that I did notice, and I think it was on an email today, and it was talking about the state and the state regulations, they're changing so quick and so rapidly. And it seems like we have to make sure we stay ahead of that.
You can't stay, you can't stay ahead of it.
When I first read that email, and it was just, it just came this afternoon, right before the meeting, and I didn't get a chance to really read into it. But they were talking about making sure that people, the towns were aware of these big changes that are already been implemented, it already been set into law and never even heard about it. And I don't know how we stay involved with that, how we stay informed, but it seems like we better make sure we know what's going on with that.
So Rick is involved and is becoming more involved with the Police Chiefs Association, who does have representative at the table when it has come to these changes. So a lot of that Rick is informed on. My membership with the VLCT Board of Directors, and I'm also on the Law Enforcement Advisory Committee Subcommittee for VLCT. So a lot of those things, Trevor Whipple also has a seat at the table in those discussions. So we have direct points of contact for a lot of these changes. And the league has been very much on top of getting that information out to the municipalities. But we're kind of, we're kind of double represented in that. Rick is represented through the police chiefs and I'm represented through the VLCT board.
Excellent.
Yep.
Seems like a lot to stay ahead of when, when things change.
Oh, it is. And there's more coming.
And there're big changes?
There're big changes and there's a lot of discussion. Another reason why it doesn't necessarily make sense to do the assessment right now, number one, it needs to be budgeted, but number two, there's more stuff coming. There was stuff left on the table at the end of the legislative session that is going to be picked back up in January, so.
I think the biggest challenge for law enforcement as a whole everywhere is the manpower issues. That it has become so unattractive to be a police officer now because you take risks, not only, not only risks, but personal risks where people are, whether their, the claims are real or not, they may, you know, they sue police officers or, and people have the wrong idea that they can do certain things, which causes a confrontation. And unfortunately, there's not a department I can think of that is significantly short on manpower. And some, there's a lot of them, the smaller ones are, you know, they're half-staffed. And then you get all this other stuff that needs to be taken care of, like keeping up with the policies and everything. That all takes man-hours and everything. All the extra training. Well, when people are going away to train, I, train's great. I love going to training. But then you still have to have somebody on the street that, you know, covering the shifts. So the manpower things, what we're doing is requiring a lot more manpower, and we're losing manpower faster than we can acquire it. So there's going to be a big vacuum there. And, and the other thing I want to say is, I, you talk about community policing. I think there's a lot more community policing going on in this town than people think or realize. I've seen how a lot of these officers interact with the public and stuff, including myself. I've, I mean, I think I'm pretty available for anybody, for whatever, even when I'm in a patrol car. But there again, it's back to having time to do this stuff. I'd rather do that stuff. But when you're, you're being required, you have to do a directed patrol, you know, somewhere all the time so people see you sitting out there or stopping cars. You, you can't be everywhere at once. There's just too much time being called for and not enough man-hours to do it, so. I just, people just need to realize that officers are trying, but they are just overstretched, especially in the full-time departments, you know, full-time officers and bigger departments.
And it seems like it's an issue everywhere.
It is.
Small town, big town, or wherever else. And, and we all want the same thing. We, we want a, a safe community of caring people. We want a police department that we could look up to and be proud of, that's part of the community. And we're all in this together.
Yeah, I think the community police academy is a great idea. It's a recruitment thing, plus it's an awareness thing. It makes people aware, okay, police officers actually do this stuff?
Yeah.
A lot of people don't understand what the job fully entails.
And that's where we need to educate.
Right.
And that is a big part of the, the training is not just for officers, it's for the community.
Exactly.
You know, it's, we need to be, we don't do well of relaying to the community what we do. We don't do that well. We don't do that well really in many of our departments. And because we just do it and we don't have the mentality of, oh, pat me on the back, because that's what it feels like, but it's not. We need to inform the community of what is taking place within their government. And that's an area we need to really work on.
Julie? Are you there?
Yeah.
Yeah, we are.
Okay. I think this document was really good, and I, I believe that it's probably going to be fluid and a live document that you'll update. Maybe, you know, quarterly, every six months, we should just reassess where it's at, what you've added, what you've taken away. But I'm really appreciative that you did this because it does show that we, even though we don't have, we aren't making a decision on a committee immediately or this or that, we do have a plan of how we're going to move forward. So I really appreciate this. Thank you.
You're welcome. Arnie, do you want to read? Do you want to read? Leslie had asked for this.
Yeah, we did have a comment from a citizen, Leslie Thorson. She can't be at the meeting tonight because she's working, but she asked that this letter be read. And I'll, I'll give it a shot. "Since I am working tonight, I am unable to attend the meeting. In reading of the last minutes, I would like to give some input on the Citizen Oversight Committee for the Chester PD." And bullet points. Number one, the VLCT did an extensive review back in 2013. Perhaps we can hire a consultant to track what is reported and what is not. That is one of the issues here with the use of force not being reported in the Jacobs case. Specifically, what is being reported is the issue that is most important for transparency. Why not hone in on that? Number two, moving forward with an oversight committee should not wait for that process. They could occur simultaneously. Number three, there is no reason to wait for all the policy and procedures to be gone through before we start a Citizen Oversight Committee. The Citizen Oversight Committee, as part of their work, should go through the policy and procedures with this Chester Police Department. I saw a lot of alarming language and vagueness in the policies we have. For real oversight, the committee should have input in these policies. Bennington's Oversight Committee does just that. They go through the policies and discuss them. That way, all the stakeholders have input in the process. Number four, the complaint form must be electronic and have an electronic footprint. I would guess fingerprint, but footprint. People who have a complaint against a Chester Police Department are not going to feel comfortable coming to the town office and handing it to the chief. Also, some people may not own a working printer. Our complaint process should be transparent and trackable. Number five, complaints could be addressed to the Oversight Committee. That is what other towns do, and the committee decides in conjunction with the police department the seriousness of the complaint. Number six, the current policies for the Chester Police Department have no disciplinary measures for misconduct or for not reporting important issues like the use of force. Or if an officer receives multiple complaints, there is no discipline. I read the Burlington Police Union contract, and for failure to act, et cetera, the officers lose vacation time and workdays without pay as a consequence for misconduct. If an officer does not follow policy repeatedly, they are terminated. Number, number seven, there are no performance evaluation policies. The chief has three unfilled out, partially filled out, performance evaluations. They are not signed by anyone, and there are no current goals or future goals filled in. We do not need to pay for an assessment when these glaring issues of no performance reviews for our chief and likewise for other officers. Instead of rewriting policies, make one for this. Finally, because there are no disciplinary measures in our policy, we have an officer working here who should be terminated. Officer Frank has a history of use of force, and if you took the time.
I object. We should not be giving out names, first of all. And, and I didn't get a copy of that letter, so I, I could not review or prepare for that. And she's allowed numerous times to, to slam this, the police department and the personnel in here and.
I'm just going to finish reading it, Jeff. It's, it's.
Well, omit the names. Just keep the names out of it. This, this, this stuff, nobody's here to defend themselves against her accusations. I went through 14 months of that crap with her. When she made an accusation against me, which, the investigation, which, it went through my sergeant, the chief, and we hired a guy to take, to do the own, the evaluation, and he went through, and I can tell you, in the end, this is ridiculous. She came in here numerous times during that 14 months and made accusations against me during the citizens' comments and, and accused me of doing things. And for 14 months, while I was under investigation, I could not open my mouth. And you continue to allow her to slam me in the Chester Police Department. I've sat here and listened to this stuff a bunch of times. And like I said, I didn't even get a copy of that letter so I could have.
I just got it today.
It was emailed this afternoon, late this afternoon, Jeff.
Can I just finish one thing that I, that I have to say, and it might clear something up for you? The last thing that I just read, she has a note on here, and I should not have read. Had I read this letter ahead of time, I would have not have read the last comment that I just made.
This is exactly why we do not have police officers sticking around, because they don't have an opportunity to defend themselves. This is ridiculous. And this, this whole report actually says, the state's attorney says where, where she committed.
I don't know if we should talk about this.
You talk about everything else that goes with the police department. As long as it's a police officer, we can put it out there, right? This report.
I don't think this is on the.
This report, in the end.
I don't think it's been.
This report, in the end, I'm going to say this out there, whether you like it or not.
Well, I'm just trying to stay by my opinion that it's not on the agenda.
It could not say it, and in the end, this detective, who was a retired police officer, started his own business, said that Officer Holden did not do anything illegal, he followed policies, and he did everything by his police, by the standards of the Chester Police Department. Was that ever put out there after this whole mess was over with? No.
Okay, but this isn't on the agenda at all.
Jeff.
Yeah, but how many times did she come in here under citizens' comments?
I don't know, but it's not on, I don't think this is where it appears.
And it was allowed. It's all, all recorded. It was allowed.
I cannot let people not speak because of my opinion about.
They're not supposed to be speaking about certain things, especially when they're under investigation. I've sat here for two years and listened to this crap.
The last paragraph that I read, it was specific in here, and had I read this before? This is the first time that I've read it, and I was just asked to read it. Had I read that last paragraph first, I would have not included that last statement regarding a specific officer, because she did not ask for that to be included in the statement. That's on me. I read it. I should have looked at it ahead of time to see what it said, that she did not want it out there. She did address it to me and Julie, not even me and Julie, it's to, it's to.
It's to me and Heather.
But it's also, everybody else is on there, too.
No, correct. She, she asked for me to forward it to the board. I got it late this afternoon. I forwarded it to the board. And she asked for it to be read as part of the record.
So the part regarding the name and the specific incident is on me. I should have stopped at number seven because that's what she requested. The information was still there and presented to the rest of the board, but she did not want that read out.
But, Arnie, we do have to, I, I think, I think we do have to read things from citizens. It's not, it's not saying that we agree with everything they say, but we do have to say that.
You don't use names when there's an ongoing investigation.
I think at this point, the damage has been done. I say move on, finish reading the letter, and then.
I should, if I had stopped at seven, I don't think any of this would have happened. And that was the end of it. That was the end of the letter.
Yeah, and it's unfortunate. You know, I think we need to be careful, and I think that the citizens' comments are on the record. And so I think at this point, if you want to read number eight, and then.
There is no eight.
Yeah, there is. It's up at the start, right at the top.
There's an eight?
Number eight, "No state policies exist for a holding cell, who is placed in them, why, for how long, et cetera. An oversight committee could play a key role here." It's the very first paragraph.
I don't have it on there.
You don't have that?
No.
Did you, you don't, you didn't print out the most recent one?
No.
Okay. I forwarded you two, so you just didn't get the second one. That's, that's the number eight.
All right.
I won't say anymore, but there's a lot of misinformation in here that she just wants everybody to believe automatically.
And this is precisely the reason for a, an assessment. This is one of the reasons for it. And one of the reasons why we have somebody who is qualified from outside of our community, trained in this area, to take a look at what are we doing and if we're doing it well and the way that we should be. we doing, and if we're doing it well and the way that we should be. In many cases, we are. There is a lot of misinformation here, Jeff, you are correct. But this is the reason why we have these outside assessments done. She does address the 2013 again, that was eight years ago. Policing has changed, and what I am looking for in my assessment, that I would like to have done, is much more than what was addressed in 2013. And not through VLCT. I want somebody who, I mean, Trevor Whipple has, I've talked to him about what I would be looking for. It is not something that the league would do. It would be, it would be a company that is hired in to specifically do these types of assessments.
And Julie, I think your approach is good. I think that you've laid out a schedule and a process for doing this stuff. It's unfortunate, Jeffrey raised a great point, that we have allegations made, oftentimes there are things that are said, and when the record is finalized, it's never set straight. And so for that, I think we need to be really careful and transparent, that at the end of an investigation, we publish that information so that everybody gets the full story.
Yep. Yep, that is a very good point.
But then that-
And when a citizen comes before the board, whether we like what they have to say, whether we agree with what they have to say, whether we're pissed off and crazy about what they have to say, we have to listen. And that's how it works in a democracy. I don't agree with a lot of things that I have to do up here, and a lot of times, people come up with some ideas and stuff, or some views and stuff, and I totally disagree with them, but I have to listen, and I have to take it all in. And that's our job.
I don't have a problem with listening to what any citizen has to say, but when there's an ongoing investigation, that person shouldn't have the right to be putting their side out there all the time when the investigation isn't complete. And that's what was allowed.
Anything that was out on this paper here, that's written there, is all public knowledge at this point, because of the commission that's reviewing this matter. And anybody could look it all up, it's on our website, we've had a response to it, it's all out there.
And like I said, half of what she said is not correct.
Okay.
That's fine. That's your opinion, and that's what you think.
I'd like to request, can we move on, please?
I don't think there's any action on that item. I was just kind of an update as to where I'm going and make sure it's where you guys agree that I, direction I should be heading in.
I think so.
Okay.
Any other comments or concerns or questions regarding the Police Department review? The next item on our agenda is to change the municipal retirement program for the Police Department. In your package, you got a little summary about some ideas that Julie has, and would you like to elaborate on that, Julie?
Sure. So part of my long-range plan, and I just talked to you about, is changing our retirement program for police. We are, municipal employees are all required to be a part of the Vermont Municipal Retirement System. All of our employees are under a Category B. Police officers are allowed to be recategorized under Category C or D. Most in the town are-
I'm gonna recuse myself from this discussion.
Okay. Most police departments in the state are under Category C. The big difference is that it changes from a 30-year retirement to a 20-year retirement. The state and VLCT, you know, are really taking a look at this for police departments. It is a career that isn't really meant to be a lifelong career because of the, you know, the physical, the psychological stressors that come with this type of position. And so in order to change your retirement category, everything has to be given to VEMRs by the very first of September. The sooner the better is what they prefer. They make that change internally. It becomes effective July 1st of 2022. So it would affect, it would affect our rates for six months out of next year's budget. And I gave you an example of what that looks like. So in 2020, effective July 1, 2022, category, or Group B rates, employer contribution is 6.5 percent. Group C, it is eight and a quarter percent. So it is a higher contribution because it's a shorter period of time that you're contributing.
So Julie, how does this apply to part-time officers, or does it?
It doesn't. So in order to be eligible for VEMRs, you have to work an average of 24 hours a week. So part-time officers are not subject to VEMRs, it's our full-time officers only.
Can you, can you tell me what VEMRs means?
Vermont Municipal and Education Retirement System.
Okay. And do you know, I looked through this, but do you know currently how much that 2% would cost us?
I should have looked at that. If you want to give me a second, I can run down and grab my budget.
No, that's okay. I'll ask you, I'll, let's, you can find it tomorrow.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Or the next day. But I'm just curious, and of course, if you had police officers that were younger, and here, you know, five years or something, it would be far less, but it was, I was just curious about what it would mean to the, the current payroll.
Right. Do you want me to go grab it real quick?
Heather, do you want that information? Do you want to wait on it, or?
I can wait on it. I just was curious. I'll wait on it, Julie. I don't need you to do that, huh?
Okay.
I mean, if we're expecting action on this, and if we, if we were gonna do it, I think we should have that information, but if we're not gonna make any changes tonight, then it's something we can look at.
That's up to the board. I know if it's a decision you're ready to make, I'll run downstairs and just grab the payroll line.
I'm ready to, I would prefer to know some more things about it and make the decision at the next meeting, because we have time. My inclination is that this is a good idea because, you know, I do think it's a position with a great deal of demands. So that's my inclination, but I'd like to hear about other people's thoughts.
Yeah, I, you know, I think it's a good idea as far as retirement goes, and the less years to get to retirement and stuff. I'm curious about the money and the effect that the money would have in it. And I also would prefer to have a full board here to review this and to make a decision on this.
Sure. Okay, so I'll put it on the next agenda.
Just the three of us.
I'll put it on the next agenda and have, I should have gotten you that number, I'm sorry. I'll have that at the next meeting. Yeah.
Julie, if that's the only thing you screw up on this year, you're good.
I can assure you, it's not the only thing I have screwed up on. Sean's got a list going. However, mistakes are typically made by Lulu, not Julie.
So we'll gather a little more information on this, and then we'll revisit it at our next meeting.
Okay.
Next item is the Village Center designation, the renewal application. This is something that we go through, what's it, every five years, every seven years?
It's every eight now, yep.
Every eight. Oh, I was close.
I'm getting there.
And do you need a motion to accept this, to re-
It is just a motion to accept the application. There are no changes this year. We're not looking to, our Village Center designation area is about as big as they will let it be. So it kind of is what it is, but we just need to have it, a motion to approve me submitting the application.
Well, I'll make a motion to have Julie submit the application for, renewal for the Village Center designation.
Second.
Heather's the motion, Lee's the second. Any further discussion on it?
Yeah, I just want to say what a wonderful thing to have done that, because just like Julie said in the beginning of the meeting, it has opened a lot of doors. So some of these things that we've done with our planning has really benefited the town long-term. Thank you.
Yeah.
So my question is related to the map that was passed out and the information provided, and it seems like, if I'm reading this map correctly, everything that's on the map is part of the Village Center. Everything that's not green, basically, is part of the Village Center?
No, the Village Center designated area is in the blue hash.
Okay.
That's the Village Center designated.
Okay. That's what I need to know. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah. And it's pretty specific about what's allowed to be in there and not, so that's why, we don't have a lot of flexibility with increasing its boundaries.
I remember there was a discussion one time about increasing it towards Bob Louie's head and down Route 11.
Yeah.
Was that ever revisited, or is that not allowed, or is that not possible?
We could certainly try again. They are looking to possibly, from what Richard Amori told me, there may be some changes coming to the allowances within that district. Right now, it wouldn't be, because it, there's too much residential. It's stretching it too far to residential.
Because right now, it seems like it heads to the two buildings past Lover's Lane.
Yeah.
But then it stops.
Yeah. And we can, it's something we can try, but we're lucky to have gotten that. The reason we got that was because of the Pinnacle. You know, we made an argument about the clinic there, and, you know, we fought pretty hard to get it as far as we could. But-
Any other further questions or discussion regarding the Village Center designation renewal? All those in favor of approving the motion as stated, please say aye.
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 Aye. There's three.
And there is, you know, there has been talk, and there is something we could look at. There has been talk about creating another Village Center designated area, that would be the Stone Village. What I don't know is if there's enough commercial activity there, but there might be. So that may be another separate designation that could be coming in the future.
Next item is to set our tax rate. Did the other information come in for that?
Yes.
Because on our notes, it says we're waiting for the tax, the education tax rate.
So I had emailed, did I email this?
Yes.
The 2021 tax rate?
Yes.
Yeah.
You didn't get this? Oh, I'm sorry. I emailed it. Here, you can use mine. We can share. So the municipal, this was the email I had sent. So the municipal rate is down a little bit, from 8531 to 8500, so we're down 3 one-hundredths of a penny. However, the education rates have really taken a jump. The non-residential education went from 1.3728 to 1.5041. And the non-residential went from 1.5005 to 1.5986. So it's, for residential, it's a 13-cent increase, and for non-residential, it's about 9-cent increase.
And none of it's municipal?
None of it is municipal, it is all the education. It is all the education tax rate. And this is, a lot of it is due to, I can go back to my seat, because you're gonna have to sign that. A lot of it has to do with, of course, the education funding nightmare in the State of Amah anyways, but the other part is, the town reassessed in, you know, in 2018 or 19, right? So this is the first year where we're seeing the full effect. When you have a CLA that is below 100%, you receive a benefit on the education portion. You're, you see the benefit of reduced rates. We're now at 100%. And so we were, Wanda was expecting this. I remember her talking to me about this when we were reappraised, like this is gonna hit at some point. So I believe it's a combination of those two. We're now at a full 100%. I think we're a little over, actually. And, and the issues that the Education Department is having in the fund, to begin with. Over is, over is, right, our CLA was over, that's what it was. Our CLA was over. We were at like 120. And that's why we were the benefit of the, of the lower tax rate. Now we are closer to 100. Our tax rates have caught back up.
Well, Arnie, I just want to say that, you know, it's for us to approve it, and yet we have control, we don't have control over the education part. So I think we all know that, but I just want to state that again.
Yep. Yep.
So the question that comes back to me, and I think I ask this every year, is to whom do we speak about the education tax rate? And how much control do we actually have over it versus, I mean, even locally versus the state controlling the rates?
Oh, there's probably five people in the State of Amah who actually understand the formulas for setting the education tax rate. Your local budget does have an impact, but it doesn't have the impact that you would think it does. It's, my understanding is, all of these budgets are thrown into a pool, and it's divided between sending and receiving towns. You don't really have a lot of say.
So it, not necessarily, excuse me, it's not the school board that we would talk to, it's not even-
It will be the Department of Education.
It would be our representative, our state representative.
It would be your representatives, absolutely. Or Secretary French.
It's how they play the whole game. It's how they figure it all out.
Huh?
This is all CLA.
Yeah, it's all CLA-based, you know, but, but when they set those education rates, your local budgets, I mean, they do contribute, but they're not your main contributor. It's not like, oh, well, we need to lower these rates, so we just need to vote down the education, we need to vote down our schools' budgets. It's not that simple.
Yeah.
It's part of a big, much bigger picture.
And I think that's part of the process, part of the process that we, as town residents, need to understand, is that, you know, you and I, the select board, can sit here and talk about the .8500 tax rate for municipal, but that's a very small portion of what we're talking about. And we do have control over that, we have zero control over the rest of it.
Right.
So I think it's important for us as residents to understand that, and to make the noise that we need to, to the people that we need to make the noise to. And it's not anybody that's really in our circle of influence.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
So we're looking for a motion to adopt by the select board, a non-residential rate of 2.454, and a residential rate of 2.3595.
So moved.
Heather's the motion, is there a second?
I guess I'll make the second.
Lee's the second.
Thank you, Lee.
Any further discussion on this?
Repeat the numbers.
Non-residential rate, 2.454. The residential rate, 2.3595. All those in favor of accepting those rates, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Better, not big.
So you need to sign that.
I mean, you know, nothing would happen, we have to.
I can come tomorrow, Julie.
Huh?
I can come sign stuff tomorrow.
That would be good, thank you.
Is this the hard topic?
Yes, that's fine, you can sign that. That's how it came across on the-
8:00 a.m.?
Yep, I'll be here.
Okay.
That's how it came across on the state form. I don't know. It says non-residential on there. They haven't made the change yet. Huh? It does come to me, yes. Thank you.
Sure. Disappearing. Be the same post.
Do you need a break? We'll take one for a second.
No.
You're all right.
All right. Next item is to sign our bond documents. I believe they're for paving this, this time, Julie?
Yep, the bond was for paving, yep, various paving projects around town. And these need to be approved individually.
Three different parts to it, I believe?
There's actually four.
Four.
So here's your first one, because you don't sign everything, so these are the ones you have to sign. It's the resolution.
And this goes back to the identifying this. We go through this, we need a motion to accept the resolution and certificate for the general obligation. obligation.
For a 2021 bond in the amount of $250,000.
Okay, so where is that?
It's all throughout that five-page document.
You have to find it.
It's not really a title.
Be easier.
I know, but I can't change the federal bond documents.
So what was the amount again, Julie?
Two hundred and fifty.
Two hundred and fifty thousand?
Yep, for the 2021 bond series.
A motion to accept the resolution and certificate for a general obligation bond of, to the amount of $250,000.
So moved.
Heather? Heather's not there. I could second a motion.
You can second the motion.
I'll second.
Sorry.
We can't vote.
I'm here. Sorry. I'm here.
Heather, Lee was the motion. I second it.
And I'll vote for it.
All those in favor of the motion as stated, please say aye.
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 You can just hand them all to him at the end.
At the end?
Yeah, you can just hand it to him at the end. You can sign him at the end, Lee.
Okay.
What is the next one?
The next one is the loan agreement, Arnie. And that is just you that signed to that, so they just need a motion authorizing you.
So I make a motion to authorize, Arnie, to sign the?
The loan agreement?
Loan agreement, yes.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion on?
Huh?
All those in favor of approving that motion, please say aye, authorizing me to sign it as the chair.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Nobody. There's two places to sign it on this one.
Well, when's the treasurer?
Bond bank? So this chair.
So the municipal bond bank, right, they're just the chair of the bond bank.
All right. All right.
And then the tax certificate.
I make a motion to approve the municipality tax certificate.
And I'll second Lee's motion.
Lee is the motion. Heather's the second. All those in favor of approving this municipal tax certificate to the tune of $250,000, please say aye.
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 And then it's the bond. And the general obligation bond itself.
And it's the United States of America, State of Vermont, Town of Chester, general obligation bond.
So moved.
Lee is the motion.
Second, I'll second.
Heather's the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Aye. Keep forgetting. Next item on our agenda is a request to review a list of town properties. In your package, you got the information regarding all the parcels of land that are scattered all about the town that the town owns and has control over. And Lee, you were interested in a lot of this and had brought this up.
Yeah, so I, I spent part of the afternoon going through the list, looking at the maps, and then I pulled up the Vermont GIS parcel viewer just to look at exactly where these were and all that. And it, I came up with a half dozen or ten properties that I thought would be worthwhile us exploring, releasing, either giving or selling or whatever, because it seems like some of the properties are, the value is very, very low. And some of them, it doesn't even make sense, or I don't understand why we own them. As an example, Keysbury Road, there are two parcels there. Apparently, the houses were washed away during Irene and somehow we ended up with a property.
Right, so that was part of the national NRCS and CRS program in order, basically it's a buyout. So it allows those, because FEMA doesn't want those houses rebuilt.
Okay.
So it funds municipalities to buy those structures and demolish them and keep them open land so they're never developed again because they're in the floodway.
So can we, are we obligated then to keep them or?
Correct. We own them in perpetuity and can never put any permanent structures on them.
Because there's one on Route 11, I think, also.
Yeah, there's one on Route 11.
Yeah, and the question I guess I had was, you know, could we sell them with the idea that they, you know, put something in the deed that restricts any?
No, they'd have to be town-owned. The town, right.
Okay. So does that also apply to, there were two properties on Route 11, one of which was the house washed away, the other one was a non-useable parcel land right by.
They were, they're both actually houses.
Oh, okay.
They were both houses. Yep, 1635 and 895.
So Smoke Sheet Road, that one's a lease agreement that we have. I didn't actually see a map for that one. But then there's Grafton Road, Marshall Road, the North Street, Bridgefield, and then the Quimby Land on School Street. And those, and then the last one was the Sheds on Elm Street, which I didn't realize we owned that property there that has the salt, old salt shed on it.
Yep, yep, it's the salt shed.
So a couple of these properties, you know, they're landlocked and it would seem to me that just either giving them or asking if the neighbors wanted to buy them, I'm not sure, because some of these, like the Hadley Land on Main Street, that was the one that's 14.1 acres.
That's behind the Brookside Cemetery.
Okay, so that's part of that whole trail thing.
Correct.
Okay. And then, so Grafton Road, that one, that's right next to Scullins.
Correct. Yep.
And that, I mean, is that something that we have any obligation for?
I, I don't know. What we, if there are some that you are, that the board is really interested in getting rid of, we need to go back and research deeds to see, number one, how did we acquire it?
Yeah.
And are we bound? You know?
Right.
Is it a gift that was bound, that, you know, we obligated?
Just looking at the values that's listed here, I'm not sure how accurate those are, but, you know, just a couple of properties is thirty, forty thousand dollars.
Mm-hmm. An assessment, yep.
Yeah, it could be turned over to a taxpayer. So I'm not sure where we go with this. It's a, it's a long list, but certainly there are less, there are fewer properties that would be potential that we could get rid of than I was anticipating. So, you know, that's education for me. But there's still a couple, I think, that would be who bus to turn over to a taxpayer.
Okay.
And you and I can go over this later, or I can go over it right now, whatever your preference is. But there's only four or five properties that I thought would make sense to.
Well, why don't you tell me what they are so that we can at least, I can have the girls up front be doing the research on if there's any, you know?
Okay.
Restrictions. Which ones are they?
So land-only, Cobbleth, Grafton Road, six oh five oh five four.
Wait a minute.
What's that, like point one two, that one?
Yep.
So where is that one?
That's right at the corner of Scullins and Grafton Street, just.
Right across from the old Waldorf, yeah.
Uphill.
Yep.
On the, oh, going out of town, that.
Going out of town, going south. It's just after Scullins Road, so.
On the right.
It, it's a basically unusable piece of property, which is probably why we own it, but it might be useful for a buffer or something, I don't know. Then the next, the next one on the list, the Marshall Road Half Lot. I drove down Marshall Road before the meeting and I couldn't even tell where it was because.
Not sure, yeah, okay.
Yeah, the property owners are using it as their own.
Yeah.
The North Street Bridgefield.
That may be an, that Marshall Road may be in access to the river, but we'll find out. Okay.
Okay.
What was next?
North Street Bridgefield, which is that little triangular piece right down here.
Near the mill there.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't know, is that, we don't use it for anything, it's got a.
That's a flood zone. I mean, a serious flood zone.
But it's also got our pump station on it.
Oh, okay. So that would be.
You have one on it?
That's got one of the pump stations. That's the First Avenue pump station is there.
On the other side of the street there.
Oh, okay. Yep, yep. Okay. And then next one is the School Street Quimby Land, which is listed at 1.1 acres, but I don't think that's.
It's on the other side, on the right, if you're going over the Swinging Bridge.
That's the Swinging Bridge property.
Right.
So that's this side of the bridge and probably the opposite side together, is it?
I thought it was just the opposite.
I don't think so. I mean, based on what I saw on the maps and the.
It was mostly on the other side.
It's all on the other side of the, the other south side of the river.
There was talk one time at clearing that and having a river access there because the pocket park was right there.
Right.
When you cross the bridge, you would bang to the right and you would go down to the river and stuff.
Yep.
But I think that was in the Village Center master foundation. It could have been.
It was. It is part of that. It is part of the pocket park plan there. We just haven't done the development on the other side.
Okay. But there is a plan for that piece of property.
There has been discussed a plan and it really is just a, that is where, when people bring, like, their kids down into the river, that's where they go.
Yeah. You know, there's a lot of trash and stuff. There used to be a house down there, I guess, and I, you know, was concerned that people get hurt and whatever. But, yeah, if there's a, if there's a purpose for it, that's fine.
Okay. Well, that's what's been discussed.
Okay. And then the only last one I was thinking about was the Elm Street Sheds, which is right next to Benny's, right across from the, the state highway garage.
Mm-hmm. That's our salt shed.
Yeah, I understand that, but once we get the highway property figured out, is that going to be useful? I mean, it seems like a valuable commercial property that.
For the, for the time being, the salt shed, I mean, maybe in the future it could be moved over. There are some restrictions because we have, that the highway is surrounded by wetlands. So where it could go would be different. Not to say that we couldn't look.
Yep.
We have looked at doing, to construct a salt shed to today's standard, the size we need is about, well, about five years ago, it was about 300,000.
Yeah.
And there's not really funding for it, so we've just always kind of said, ah, it's low man on the totem pole. We don't really need to.
Yeah.
That's not to say we couldn't in the future.
Yeah. I had no idea that was our property. I had no idea we actually kept salt in there.
Yeah, yeah, that's the salt.
And a good education.
And there's some storage in there, too. One of those sheds is, is overflow storage for the highway.
Yeah.
Which maybe will get used less and less now that.
Apparently, one shed is ours and the other shed belongs to the state from what I see on the, on the property line.
I know we have storage down there.
Yeah, yeah. Interesting. Okay.
Yep.
Well, thank you for.
Lee, thanks for spearheading this because, and I'm, I'm also appreciative that there aren't a great deal of properties that are in excess of what we need or use.
Well, there's another interesting is that one acre on the Green Mountain Union High School property that was going to be for the future water tank, but that's totally out of the picture at this point.
I thought that was actually the water tank, but.
No, that one acre was where the original project was going to be going to that one acre, where then we're right away through the Green Mountain Union High School property.
Right.
But because of the financial advantages and all the other reasons, we ended up doing it on the O'Neill property and that one's, it was the exact same elevation, but that's one acre.
Yeah.
In the middle of nowhere. Well, in the middle of a school property.
I was going to say.
Yeah.
Yep.
So that's that land-only GMUHS tank site?
Yep, I'm trying to find it on here. Where is it? Land only. Over there. I can look to see if there's any restrictions on that one as well.
At least have a better understanding of what we own and what we don't, because often, not often, sometimes I get questions about why is the town on all this property?
Absolutely.
Well, there was another one, that one on the Reservoir Road, a tiny little piece. Is that on here?
Yeah, there's like three or four.
Point two acres. That was donated to the town, you know, with the intention, her, the intention when the donation was made, that we might put a picnic table there or a little wayside stop or something, but I don't ever see that.
That's right, that's right next to the gravel pit, right?
It's before it, on the right-hand side, right after, I forget the name of the farm there. It's a, it's a little piece of land. I mean, it's, it looks like the town mows the grass every now and then.
We do. She's asked that we.
And keeps it up, but, and it was, you know, the intention was really worthy. I mean, she wanted to give the town something back.
Yeah.
You know, and hopefully it would be used for, you know, a spot like that, but, and maybe someday it will be. But that is what it is. Any other discussion or any other comments on the list of town lands that we have? Go on to our next item on the agenda, errors and omissions with the listeners.
So there are actually five of them. They, most all of them are actually dealing with current use stuff.
I only got four.
Uh, well, that's because two of them were stapled together and I didn't realize it until after. So probably when it scanned, two of the Ada Chester ones were stapled together.
Okay.
One decreased on one, because of a subdivision, decreased on one parcel, went to another parcel. And she had stapled them together and I actually just noticed it today. So it probably scanned this one.
Individually?
Um, you know, you can just approve the listers' presented errors and omissions, but then you do need to sign off, all of them.
So it entertain a motion to approve the error and omissions, five statements from the listeners.
So moved.
Second.
I'll come in and sign them.
Here you go, Arnie.
No, this is the.
Those are the ones you need to sign. While you're signing, I'm going to run some.
Everybody. Making use of the time.
Thank you. And some housekeeping cemetery deed. That's it.
All right. New business, future agenda items. Financial review will be coming up. Speed limits, I guess, Julie?
Yep, if you're ready for them. I have everything you need to start the discussion, yeah.